Do that, let's go ahead and take care of item one seventeen. I mean, yes, one seventeen. Is there a motion to approve the nomination? Councilor Paul makes a motion, is there a second? Councilmember Kelly seconds. Discussion on this motion, Councilor, sorry you pulled it, do you want to address it?
Yes, Mayor. I appreciate your patience, Chief Chacon, having testified at legislature today and spent the day at the Capitol and then to be here today on what I know is a significant day for you. I've appreciated the chance to speak with you. I congratulate you on being put forward today for confirmation. And I've, just to let everybody know, I've sent some questions over to the chief. And I know the answers and I appreciate you actually just answering yes to all of these questions. It really shows you leaning in to this position. And so it's not a, I'm forecasting that because that's what you've said. But I also think it's important to ask some number of the questions here in public. Just because it's an important vote and I think it sets forward some of our shared priorities. And I'm sure, as there will always be amongst all of us, different times that we disagree. But I appreciate your commitment on some of this work. So I'm not going to ask you all the questions that I sense, but just some of them. So the first one is that I expect that in my first three questions have to do with the OPO. The first one is that I expect in many cases, you will agree with recommendations with the OPO, but there will potentially be times you disagree. If there is a policy recommendation from OPO that you don't implement or don't agree with, will you in those cases send a memo to council explaining your rationale?
Thank you, Councilmember Kassar and, you know, Mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity and even being considered. I really am honored for this opportunity. To answer the question, yes, I have no problem. Part of our process when the OPO sends over a policy recommendation, of course, we fully vet it, consider it to see whether it would, you know, follow best practices and/or if it's problematic for some reason. And I commit to sending back written responses to Director Musketin so that she knows either yes, we're going to fully implement, maybe we can partially implement and we can have those discussions, or there is a disagreement. I think it's important for both of our departments to have that conversation, to fully, you know, discuss the topic. And in the end, if we just cannot come to terms to have that discussion with the city manager, make sure that they understand what the topic is. And then we would issue a written response, which of course is posted on their website and is available to everyone, including Mayor and council.
Thank you, and I think something that could be useful would be if there are several of those, to batch them together intermittently and get them over to us so that we have our eye for it. My second question related to OPO is, will you ensure that all questions that OPO wants asked in an IA interview, if they're pertinent questions, the investigation indeed do get asked?
Yes, I think that's an easy one for me to actually commit to because if it is a pertinent question, then it should be asked. I think that sometimes there are, of course, differences in opinion about whether something is pertinent. And I commit to work with Farah's office to make sure that we work through those issues so that we minimize them to the greatest extent and get the questions that her office wants asked, make sure that they are asked.
Great, and then my third and last question related to the OPO is that issues have been raised by OPO about how Internal Affairs has handled several complaints from the public. Can you work with OPO in your first thirty days after being confirmed here as interim chief on how to deliver fixes to those issues that have been raised? And then deliver us a joint memo with your steps moving forward? And I would hope in that memo you could talk about how to make sure that external complaints are worked on as thoroughly as those that are internal, you could work on in that memo, how to have a process for when there's a disagreement about whether a question is pertinent or not, how that would get handled? Is that something you can deliver to us in the first thirty days or work on in the first thirty days of your time?
Well, certainly for my part, because you're asking for a joint memo. I don't want to speak for Director Musketin, but I think that she would be, yeah, I think she would be very agreeable to that as well. And I've had several conversations with her already to talk about our relationship between the two departments. And I think that we have, we've made some good first steps forward. So I do think that both of us would be very agreeable to issuing a memo, of course, that would outline those steps.
Right. My next question is about the SART. So, you know, we've been working for some time to really address sexual assault in Austin, working alongside survivors of sexual assault and advocates. The DA and multiple law enforcement agencies have recently joined or fully rejoined the SART. I know that some part of APD has been present, like Victim Services, but that SWORN has not recently been there. Will you rejoin the SART with sort of full personnel, including SWORN?
Yes, we will be rejoining the SART in full. And to be clear, the Victim Services Unit and our Forensics Division had never stopped going to those meetings. We wanted to make sure we maintained a presence while we, you know, under the last DA, we actually were going to two different meetings. So now with everything being rejoined under one SART, yes, we will be rejoining it in full.
I want to ask a question about substance use. You know, today we approved some substance use contracts to better get at the root issues that we have in the community. And you and me have talked about how you can't just arrest away addiction, and it's not that simple. What ideas might you have about how we can better address substance use issues that we know don't simply get solved by policing? Knowing that it's an important issue and a significant issue in our community?
Right. So there's, you know, substance use often intersects with some other areas of great concern for the community and for the police department, including, you know, people who are experiencing homelessness, people with mental health issues. And so we've been working, you know, I personally have been working on the Travis County Behavioral Health and Criminal Justice Advisory Committee on several areas where we can try and intercept those folks that are having these, all of these type of issues, including substance use issues, at an earlier point before their interaction with the criminal justice system. Whether that is, you know, interaction with police at all, or, you know, and hopefully before they have to go to jail. And so, you know, this multi-disciplinary team is really making some good progress on some different ideas, including expanding, you know, the Sobering Center has actually been expanding their efforts in this area to, because many times our officers will transport individuals that are intoxicated, not just on alcohol, but on other substances, to see how we can get them enrolled into services and get them, like I said, out of that criminal justice system. There are some other things in the works as well. So I've been committed to this for a long time. And I've indicated to all these folks that I've been participating with on committees that that is only going to get stronger and kind of reinforcing that commitment.
Thank you, I have two last questions for you. On issues of use of force, we know that the OPO has released a report detailing recommendations on Eight Can't Wait and those general order changes. We also know that council passed a resolution to address shooting at moving vehicles, limiting no-knock warrants, addressing facial recognition and military equipment. On these sets of issues, there's still work to be done on those general order updates. Are you ready to work on those general order recommendations and to bring those changes in a way that really tries to achieve agreement between the CPRC, the department, OPO, all of those stakeholders? Can you try your very best to bring us consensus on those changes?
Yes, I will commit to working on these issues. You know, I understand the intent of the Eight Can't Wait policy recommendations. You know, we've been working for some time on trying to find ways that we can implement them without sacrificing public safety or officer safety. Both of those obviously are very important. And so there are a number of, you know, best practice models that are out there that have been instituted by respected institutions like PERF and by IACP that are helping to drive those conversations. But I can tell you that I have a strong commitment to continuing to work on those so that in the end, we walk out with something that the CPRC, the OPO, and APD can all say that they have a hand in and that everybody can get behind.
Thank you, last question and related to the broader reimagining work that we're all doing. You know, I think we share a commitment to try and find alternative responders for appropriate nine-one-one calls that might be better handled by someone other than a SWORN officer or things that can be better and more cost-effectively handled by civilians, thereby reducing the workload on SWORN officers. So what are some of the biggest opportunities that you might see in the reimagining safety process where you think we can actually be more effective, think of things differently, and really make our community more safe?
Yeah, probably I would say that the biggest opportunity is in the area of mental health. We, not too long ago, it was December of last year, I believe, that we instituted and started our crisis call diversion program in our call-taking center for nine-one-one calls. And to my knowledge, we're the only department in the country that has a fourth option in the call-taking script where, when it's answered, they say, "Do you need police, fire, EMS, or mental health?" If they say mental health, they're diverting to a counselor to see if we can, as I said, kind of divert that response away from police and get them with the true experts, our mental health experts with integral care. There's a number of other areas that, with regard to mental health, that we continue to make these kinds of, this kind of progress and these efforts continue. And I do think that the more that we can take those type of calls that are better handled by people other than the police who truly have the expertise and let our, give our officers more time to handle the more serious criminal activity that we know is happening, everybody's going to be better for it. So I will commit to continuing those kind of efforts.
Thank you, Chief. This is a really challenging job and I know you've served the department for a long time in this work. I appreciate you making those commitments to rejoining the SART and addressing those use-of-force policies and working with us in these interim months on the reimagining safety process. And so I want to wish you the best and we'll support you in this vote.
Thank you.
Chief, this is not an easy city probably to be police chief. It's a city that is really trying to truly draw on a whiteboard and advance and take advantage of opportunities that are not run-of-the-mill or already incorporated by other cities, but to really examine what it takes to take an already safe city and make it even safer. When that happens, it draws a certain level of criticism, including up the street here in the pink dome. And as the police chief in this community, it can be difficult, given the controversies around policy. You know, I've frequently said that it's important that the chief executive of the police department in Austin be someone that not only is willing to execute the community will for how public safety should be done, but an executive that shares in the reason for that and the basis for that so that it goes beyond just executing the instructions, but believes that there's an important reason to do that. You testified today up at the Capitol as our community representative on questions of policing in an environment that is not altogether friendly for the city in its efforts here. And by all accounts, you were great. And I think that the way that you opened your testimony in talking about the importance of furthering the community will in order to be able to build trust, to take a look, because at some, at a bottom level, that's what so much of this is about. It's having everyone in this community trust the police department, trust that they're going to be kept safe, trust that the police are there to protect them. It's the trust of all of the community in our police as our guardians is really the base value that makes policing work. I congratulate you on the promotion and the nomination. I'll be supporting it. And I just wanted to note that today, again, you stepped into that place and you were a wonderful advocate for what it is that this community is trying to achieve.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Togo and then Councilmember Kelly. Can't hear you, Kathy.
The chipmunk is back. Okay, how about this?
Okay, that's good.
I'll be very quick, especially since we were talking about substance use just a little earlier in diversion programs. I just wanted to acknowledge Assistant Chief, soon-to-be interim chief, Chacon's work on the Sobering Center board. I think you've brought tremendous value to that role and I've had the, really the privilege of working with you for a short time in that capacity. And I'm very excited to see you stepping into this role as interim chief. And so thank you for all of your service to the city of Austin, but thank you for being willing to serve in this new capacity. I have a tremendous amount of confidence in you.
Thank you, Councilmember, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, I wanted to thank you as well, Assistant Chief Chacon, soon-to-be interim chief, for reaching out to me this week. I know you reached out to all the other council members to start to build the foundation upon which your relationship with us will be in. And it's very positive, especially the communication back and forth and the transparency between your department and the questions that we all have. So thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, Councilmember Alter.
Thank you, Chief Chacon. Congratulations, pleased to support your nomination. I do have a couple of questions I wanted to follow up on our conversation earlier this week. You know, particularly to reflect on the conversation we just completed with respect to the academy. You know, trust is broken in the community. And I'd like to hear from you what commitment you can give us that APD will implement these recommendations and truly transform the academy and the culture. You know, getting us to this one hundred and forty-fourth class pilot is going to be on your watch. Completely, I suspect, given the timing. And I just want to hear from you what your commitment is. Obviously, we heard some reservations in the community. And as you step into your new role, I would like to hear you on this very important topic.
Certainly, I appreciate it. So trust, if we're going to build trust within the community, it's really built on two principles. The way that we're communicating the police department to the stakeholders, whether that's council, whether it's our community stakeholders, and even within the department itself. And then the transparency, you know, that we have. And to the comments the mayor kind of opened with, I made some comments at the State Capitol today, really highlighting where we fell short and why I think that many of the actions that have been taken by council over the last year have occurred. And if we have to, we really have to acknowledge where the department can do better and then lay out that plan on how we're going to get there. And that's what the blueprint and the plan really to get our academy going again is all about. Under my watch, and, you know, we've brought on some just really incredible people that have been working on this project, including Dr. Ann Kringen, who is bringing already in her short time here, a very good perspective and knowledge into, that is going to inform this process. There's going to be a lot of scrutiny on it, that's a good thing, to make sure that we don't let it veer off track. So I feel very confident that with the commitment that I'm making and that APD collectively is making to ensure that we are building those guardians that I know that people really want to see in the community, that it's not going to fail.
Thank you, I, you know, we've been talking a lot tonight about the academy, you know, and the training for cadets. And one of the things that, you know, we talked about right at the start of our conversation was the pride that you have in the men and women who serve in APD and your confidence, which I share in their abilities and their going out every day and risking their lives and serving and the importance of that. Can you explain a little bit about, A, how you want to continue to help them develop as leaders and as guardians? And then also speak to how you, as chief and your executive group, are going to make efforts to listen to the officers because they have great ideas, they have thoughts, they have innovations that have not always of late been able to surface?
Yeah, absolutely. Through a series of meetings that I've already been having with our department members at various levels, I've met with commanders this week, of course, I've met with executive staff to lay out what my plan and my vision is for how we will really improve morale. We will create an environment of professional development, create areas where our employees feel empowered and that we are espousing true servant leadership by empowering them and by giving them the tools that they're going to need to be successful. Just this week, we had members at various ranks, starting with first-line supervisors all the way up to commanders and assistant chiefs that are going through professional development training that we are putting on. This is going to be a continuous process that's going to take months, that will be very introspective for officers to understand themselves. And then through the guidance and the leadership that I know that our command staff is going to be able to provide and push down through the ranks to the officers, all the way to the line level, we will be instilling that servant leadership mindset. By creating, within our own department, the principles of procedural justice, which really all that means is just being very transparent in the things that we're doing, good communication with our own folks, giving them a voice in the things that we are doing as a department to make sure that we, not only, they have the opportunity to help drive and innovate, but also that they have the buy-in down the road. And then explaining the why on when sometimes things change. We have not always been the best about doing that. I think that that's probably any big organization, communication will always be a challenge. But that is one of my highest priorities for executive and command staff going forward. So that, those are the kind of strategies that I'm really laying out for our folks very early on to, on how we will drive that change and how we are going to drive that professional development.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Kelly and our Mayor Pro Tem, I don't think I've had a chance to go yet.
Almost did it, thank you, Mayor. Chief Chacon, I have had the good fortune of having had some very difficult conversations with you this last couple of years. And I will say that I appreciate the emotional maturity that is required for a person to remain professional during the course of tense conversations and sometimes on the receiving end of criticism. So I appreciate that and I look forward to us having a good working relationship while you're here. And so I guess my questions kind of piggyback on the ones that have already been asked, but because those were so, I guess, not as granular as the ones I'd like to ask. I'm going to ask some specific questions about things that I've heard, you know, in the past and have found myself wanting to make sure aren't the way of the future. So the way I understand it, you know, the fifth floor, right? It's this, it's like the never-ending story, right? It's the place you're trying to get to, it's a, I don't know, it feels to me like there's a very distinct separation between the people who work in the fifth floor and the people who don't work on the fifth floor. And I'd like very much to feel like a part of our culture shift has to do with shifting that mentality. And so I just would like to know what your opinion is that, you know, part of the culture and ideally what it looks like for you?
I don't think that has ever been the intent, it was very much the outcome. And I recognize from, as you said, criticisms that have been levied against myself and other members of executive staff for, you know, creating a divide or allowing it to happen. But I can tell you that under my leadership, that will change. And I've made it very clear already to executive staff that we are going to be spending quite a bit of time with our officers in the field, whether that is in meetings that they have, if they're investigative units or on patrol with our officers so that they feel we're creating spaces in an environment for them to be able to have meaningful conversations. And that has, I think that that has been lacking to a great extent. Our command staff is fully on board with this. As a matter of fact, I think they're pretty excited about it. So I feel like we're already starting to bridge the divide that was there and it's going to be a good way forward.
I appreciate that and it makes me think about something else I heard. You know, here in this last, especially year and a half or so, there's been some, you know, I know one of my colleagues spoke to morale, you know, in general. And I just want to make sure to point out that for some officers that, you know, sort of loss of morale, the loss of the love of the job didn't come from the general public or, you know, our constituents. It came from within the department, it came from their coworkers, their peers. And I just want to make certain that in this shift, in this adjustment, that when we're talking about people's quality of life, we mean, you know, including, you know, the officers who do this job. We want them to have the best job and enjoy their job and also enjoy their coworkers and not fear retaliation or abuse. And so I just want to make certain that that's a key component to our conversation about reimagining. And I hope that as we are searching for, you know, the chief who understands the importance of of that concept of keeping everybody safe, including within the department, you know, no tolerance whatsoever for that kind of behavior. I hope that that's something that, you know, you'll carry it and be the legacy that they pick up. and, and be the legacy that they pick up.
I hope to be. And I can tell you that we were just talking, I was talking with civilian, civilian and SWORN leadership about how we are changing up some of our processes, entry-level processes on, on documents that people fill out and, and on the, the initial meetings that they're having as they integrate in as a city employee, you know, that they, that there are strong statements that say that harassment, retaliation, racism, all of those are, will not be tolerated at the Austin Police Department. And so they have to actually sign a checkbox saying that they acknowledge this and that they agree to abide by it. So we're, we're instituting a culture now that from the very first moment that they come in, they know what the ground rules are and that it will not be tolerated. And for our officers that are already here, that to, to have an attitude of active bystandership, bystandership to, if they see something, they will call it out. And I think that happens, that happens all the time. You know, if you, I, I know that Director Musketin with the OPO is very aware that many more internal affairs complaints are generated internally than externally with our own officers or supervisors calling out when they see policy violations like that and others that occur. So we continually strive to, to make our fellow better. I think that the, the, the national narrative has, has worn on their morale as well. I mean, I, I, you know, you can't get it from television and social media and, and, and everything that our officers have been through for the last nine to 12 months and not have it affect you as well. But I certainly, to your point, understand what you're saying.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I wish you luck.
Thank you.
Councilor Kitchen.
Yes, thank you. I especially wanted to, to thank you for the work that you've been doing with the Austin Cares Program. I mean, as you mentioned earlier, that's, that's, that is a very innovative program and it's something that really puts us at the forefront of addressing mental health issues in the way that they should be. So it's very exciting that we're now at the point where we have a fourth, fourth option. And so, and I, and I know, I, I really am looking forward to the full implementation of all the different recommendations that were made that are part of that Austin Cares Program. So I appreciate, I really appreciate your efforts guiding it to this point. And from your comments earlier, I'm, I'm sure we can trust you to continue to make that a priority.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly.
Yes, thank you. I was just wondering if the different, the hundred different positions that were recently moved back onto patrol, if there was any plan to move forward to put those specialized units back or not? If there was anything like that, that you had plans for?
I'm not sure that, that we're going to have people back in place under this interim period to be able to make those kind of moves. So there are no short-term plans to, to move people back to those positions right now. The reason we moved them there was to make sure that we had enough patrol officers to have adequate, you know, officers on patrol with, with good response times and, and they're providing that public service for 911 calls. So unfortunately, we had to, to make some changes. I would love to see down the road, as we have our academy classes running again and, and we start to refill the ranks, that we are able to move officers back to those specialized positions that we had to move them from. But unfortunately, that is going to be a longer-term effort.
Thank you.
My hope is, is that with the work that we are doing in, in, with homelessness and, and getting better mental health interventions and the other work we have, that some of the workload and some of the responsibilities for the force will also change. And, and, and that will also help with making sure that you have the officers that you need where you need them. Anything else? Let's take a vote. Those in favor of approving the nomination, please raise your hand. Those opposed? I think it is everybody. So eleven oh, that passes. Yes, Councilmember Paul?
Did you want to make sure that Councilmember Togo was able to register?
Oh, we.
There she is. She's right in the middle.
Yeah. One, two, three, four, five, nine, 10, 11, all eleven is present. Manager, did you want to say something?
Just a word of appreciation for this confirmation of the appointment of Chief Chacon as the interim chief for our departments. Again, this is an incredibly important time for our city and our community. And I couldn't have picked a better leader to allow us to navigate this and really looking forward to having him at the helm for these several months as we look for our permanent chief. And so thank you for your support and thank you, Chief Chacon, for taking on this responsibility.
Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations.